I will now call this work session to order. It's January 17th, 2024. Just a reminder to remember to keep your microphones muted when you're not speaking. And when you do speak, we also request that you state your name so everyone can track who is speaking. So now let's go ahead and go to our agenda. And we're starting off with a go around question of what do you want to accomplish with COA? And basically, we're talking about this year with our emergency preparedness theme. So who wants to go first? How about you, Larry? I can see you.
Justin raised his hand.
Oh, okay, Justin.
This is Justin Ross. What I would like to hope to see us accomplish this year would be the implementation or actually execution of or seeing something come to fruition beyond the level of just planning, but actually seeing some tangible results from all the efforts that you guys have put down for so long. And I think there's, I think we're at that precipice or that pinnacle point where we can start to see the fruits of your labor.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
Well, I, for me, it's important that we get a little bit more involvement from this county counselors. And some of the things we do and a little bit more feedback from them. It's kind of useful, things they want us to focus on and so forth and COVID. Because obviously they're, they're in contact with the health department and some of the issues and so forth. But you know, how about just, you know, checking in with us and say, hey, Commissioner, how about exploring this particular area, some restrictions in COVID? Seniors and their changes, what changes ever made? Does that make sense in that?
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Larry. Ken?
I would personally love to figure out a way to move beyond talking into do. And as it relates to COA, you know, we've got some really good initiatives. If we can just follow through, especially on the one that broadens communication and gets education out into the community. I think that would be a terrific step forward.
Okay, thank you. That's great, Ken. Is Ellen here?
Yep, I'm here. I think that related to what you were talking about about emergency preparedness. I would like to better understand where we are with COA and emergency preparedness and how we can better support seniors in our community related to emergency preparedness because I think when we have an emergency and we're, most of us are experiencing sort of an emergency right now. We need to make sure that we are supporting the seniors in our community.
That's, that's really appropriate. Thanks for your comment, Ellen. One of the things that I think is going to help a little bit to clear up that understanding is our session that we're going to have a little bit later on our fireside chat with Scott Johnson. Cass and I had the opportunity to meet with him briefly last Monday and it was really eye opening, even though I've had some exposure to emergency situations. It was really quite informative. So I'd like to touch base with you after today's session to see how you feel about your, your grasp of things then. Thank you very much. Cass?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the do part is going to be really exciting because we have been out of the do phase for a little bit because during the, the creation of the, you know, the, the refreshing of our aging readiness plan, we had a lot of do pieces, but it was all focused around that. So getting out in the community is wonderful. And just facilitating a million connections between all of these community groups and organizations and, you know, support systems and residents in our community, aging residents. So just, you know, wrapping our arms around what that means.
Very good. Thank you, Cass. Mel, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello, everybody. What I'd like to see us accomplish is a networking with the other agencies, a real networking, so that we are able to accomplish those goals that we have. Basically, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Okay, did I miss anyone? Susan and Amy, do you have any, any thoughts that you would like to share?
We're, I guess I would just say we're happy to support you in all of your initiatives and excited that everyone is interested in moving forward and moving on to the do phases, as you mentioned, and we're excited for that too. So I think we've, you know, I don't know if we're going to have a lot of people involved today just because of the weather and it's all online, but we have heard from a few people that they're really interested in this topic. And so I'm hoping that we'll have some additional attendees at some of our meetings. And I think it's, it's a great way to get the word out. So I think it's exciting. So thank you.
Hey, Franklin? Yes, sir.
Just something else to add to reinforce what someone just brought about partnerships. I really think that's so important is the partnerships that exist out there. You know, with my travels and involved in the community, there's a lot of duplication. And there's opportunities where we can work closer together. And I'll give you an example of Meals on Wheels of providing seniors with meals. In fact, this week they haven't gotten any meals at all. It's all been canceled. But trying to work closer together and bring these agencies together that are focused on seniors where they can look at if there's duplications or whether they can be refined. And I just, it just came to my mind when someone mentioned about partnerships. I think that that partnership is where we can smooth the working relationships and be much more efficient in what we do.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, is there anyone else on that I haven't caught yet? Okay, let me just give you my two cents. I've, I've been really looking at the emergency preparedness chapter and the strategies in that chapter. And so the thing I would like to see is that we can go through and look at each one of those, each one of those strategies, determine who's responsible for either implementing or finding a proof that they, they either are already in existence someplace or that they don't work so that we can report back to the community on what we did with all of the things that, the ideas that they gave us. So I would, I'm really focused on looking at those strategies, trying to get them implemented or at least resolve the status and then be able to report back. So that's my feedback. So without any other comments, I'd just like to ask one quick question before we go into our agenda. Larry, you mentioned that Meals on Wheels, did they cancel their services this week?
Yeah, they canceled the services, which is unfortunate. They do a, a call in. Because if there's an emergency out there, they can provide, find someone driving it, drives a four wheel drive vehicle or truck. It's the drivers are concerned about because many of the housing they go to, you know, they're going to go through parking lots and most of those haven't cleaned out. They're ice covered and so forth. So it's a safety factor. So they don't want to put drivers in a, in a difficult time. And many of those drivers are probably my age. They're in their late seventies and eighties, the majority of the drivers. So they end up, when it gets serious like this, ice in the road, they'll cancel it. And then what they'll try to do is the next time they deliver is double up the food. And so you get double the meals to cover the week that you may have missed. But it is a challenge. And as I said, there, there are some hardy souls out there that when the volunteers do call ins to check on the, their clients. If the client is really in a struggle, then they'll go back to some backup drivers who have the capability of getting to the area. So that makes sense.
Okay. Do they have any provision for if there is a forecast of inclement weather that they might double up on the meals before the incident occurs?
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that has been done. That, because that issue came up a couple of years ago. It said, well, if we know the good forecast and they're pretty solid in the forecast, yeah, let's just double up the meals and take it out to it. So they'll at least have the meals in the house and don't have to worry about getting them because, you know, to be quite honest, you, I tell you, there's a couple of clients I have, I don't know how they survive. In fact, I'm going to drive out tomorrow and check on one of them. Because she lives in that house, it's falling down. It's covered with a tarp. It's got boarded windows and so forth. And Blanche, I don't know who takes care of her. But, you know, somewhere along the line, somebody's got to watch and see, make sure she's okay. But yeah, those precautions are taken care of and they've tried to look at every way possible to get food out to them. But some of them really depend on that food.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
And Franklin, just so you know, Donna just joined us online. Donna, we can't see your video, but you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Donna. We're going around with the responding to the question, what do you want to see COA accomplish this year? So when you get unmuted, would you respond to that, please? And welcome. Can you see anything? I can't see anything on Donna, so I don't know if she's.
She, she may be having some technical difficulties. I don't see anything from her right now, but maybe we could come back to her.
Okay, okay, fine. Well, let's go ahead and move into our agenda for today. Let's go ahead and start with old business and updates. Has everyone had a chance to review the November 15th meeting notes? And is there?
I moved that we approved the meeting notes from November. That's Ken.
Okay, thank you, Ken. But I think we do that in the regular meeting, don't we?
Oh.
Yes, I think you normally just discuss the meeting notes in the work session and then the formal motion is, is in the meeting.
Okay. So is there any, any comments or any changes to the November 15th meeting notes? Okay, hearing none, then I guess we'll let those stand and we will go ahead and make a motion and approve those in our regular meeting. Let's get an update on the 2024 work plan status.
Okay, I do see Donna online now, so.
Why don't you go ahead and I'll catch up.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Donna. So Amy, if you could bring the work plan up. So Amy and I have been working on the work plan since we sent it to everyone for review, I think back in November. And we've also had some meetings with Scott Johnson, who you will meet later today, with the Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency. And also with Cass and Franklin and Amy, right now we're seeing the annual report, just FYI. So the work plan is similar to what we sent in the, in November. And there we go. We'll be working on several strategies from the the plan. I'm, can't believe, the Aging Readiness Plan, woo. And starting with personal and family related strategies and caregiver related strategies. And working in, from individual to neighborhood and to the community. So in January, later today, we're going to start with an introduction to the Prepare in a Year plan. And working on those personal strategies, including and also including information about pets. In February, we will have our annual joint meeting with the county council, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later today. Then we'll move into March with how to create an emergency kit. Sharing emergency, emergency kits in April. Creating a personal plan in May and storing water and supplies in June. Moving to neighborhood level conversation in July about knowing your neighborhood and knowing your community. We did discuss moving the retreat that we normally have a little bit later in the year. And so right now we have it planned for September. We did that because the retreat has been the very first thing that a lot of members participate in. And it seemed like it was a little bit difficult to have the very first thing be a retreat when you hadn't even attended a normal meeting. So we've, would, we have it in the plan right now to have that retreat in September. It's also fall and the time that everybody starts maybe thinking a little bit more about the end of the year and the next year. So it seemed like a good time to have a retreat to talk about 2025. In October, we'll talk about communication and awareness and alerts. And that is a little bit more focused on the community level. And similar to last year, we'll have an award presentation for the Silver Citizen Award in November. So that is the plan right now. We'll be working with folks in Cressa. There'll be different presenters. Some will, will be the same presenter, but there will be different presenters for different months. And like I said, I've been really excited because we sent, there, there's been a news release and an email to all of the neighborhood associations in the city and the county. And we've gotten more response than we've gotten, I think, in the past that there's interest in this topic. So I think that part is, is very encouraging. And that's pretty much the work plan. If Amy.
Susan?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, don't we have some commissioners we have to bring on board?
Yes, so let me, Amy, if you could go to the calendar? And we can. Okay, so this shows, that's a perfect segue, Larry, because this shows the different monthly meeting topics. But it also shows other activities that we work on during those months. So for example, in January, the COA Chair Franklin and Vice Chair Cass will meet with the Council Chair and the County Manager. In February, we have the, the joint council meeting, but we also have the application period. We send out the news release for letting people know that we'll have new openings on the commission. Once we have that February meeting with county council, then we move on to sending the annual report to the city councils and we start scheduling those city council meetings. In April, we have the appointment of a subcommittee so that they can review applications, do interviews and develop recommendations for those new members. And we continue city council presentations. In May, we generally do the older Americans Month proclamation. That's the last meeting for outgoing commission members. And we continue with city council presentations. In June, new members start, and that's when we used to do that, that retreat, but we're proposing to move it a little bit later. And continue with city council presentations. And then in July, we start advertising the, do the press release and start advertising for the Silver Citizen Award. We do officer elections and city council presentations. In August, the subcommittee reviews the Silver Citizen nominations and makes recommendations and the new officers take office. And sometimes still doing city council presentations, depending on when they have time on their schedule. In September, the commission confirms the Silver Citizen awardee. And in October, we advertise for the Silver Citizen and get the plaque ordered and those kinds of details. In November, we work on the annual report and get the commission's approval for that concept. And also do a National Caregivers Month proclamation. And in December, we generally do not have a meeting, but we do have a subcommittee that meets and works on the annual report. So that is, we usually put the calendar online once it's generally approved by members. And just wanted to also mention all of those activities. So do, does anybody have any questions or comments on all of that?
Susan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just a couple of suggestions, and maybe I just missed it, but on any information, including commission vacancies, application process, I strongly encourage us to work with the senior messenger newspaper, the monthly newspaper that goes out. And I have, I don't recall seeing anything in that back when about seeking applications for members. And it might not even be too late to talk to them about me doing an article about the Silver Citizen Award person. And the other thing that I just thought of today, because I know our focus is on emergency planning and so forth, is maybe you could even talk to them about at least for the next year or so, letting us do a regular column about emergency planning or what's coming up or how people can be involved. Because that newspaper has a pretty wide distribution and targeted audience.
And we have done some work with them. Cass and Franklin have worked on some articles. We did some press, so a couple of things. We did some working with them on the Aging Readiness Plan. We also did find out that for some reason, our news releases prior to about April of last year, I think, did not always go to them. They only, not sure exactly why, but they are on our regular news releases now. So hopefully, and we can certainly check with them to make sure that they're getting all of those. But yes, we have worked with them in the past and I agree, there's a, they're a, a great outlet for our information and they seem very interested in the activities of the commission as well.
Then also, I'm not sure what the process is now or what programs are out there, but maybe even working with CVTV to do a PSA or two about particularly the application process and the emergency readiness meeting.
Absolutely. We have done general, we've done a few of those. We did one on the also Aging Readiness Plan. But yes, they are covering, they're not today because of the different format, but they will be covering all of our meetings, but we could certainly talk to them about a close up or different type of PSA or, or, you know, whatever format they choose on this information.
Donna, those are excellent suggestions. And Susan and Amy, I want to find out after this meeting, what we need to do to shore or solidify our relationships with the various news outlets. I think it might be good to have at least an article after each one of our meetings to kind of highlight the fireside chat and other issues that are covered during that. So let's look into that and get a, get a contact first identified that we can get this information to and ensure that it gets, gets published in a timely manner.
And Franklin, let me just mention too, I, I can't believe I forgot to mention this previously, but there was an article in The Reflector today about the emergency preparedness meetings.
Yes, it was, and that was very good. And Donna, while, while we have you, we had a go around question at the beginning of the meeting about what do you want to accomplish with COA this year? So would you take a moment and just respond to that, please?
I think just really working and targeting our partnerships to be most effective to getting practical, useful information out to the aging community. And I know it's not our job to be a service provider, but making sure we're working with the service providers so they have the information to get to where it needs to go.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, any more comments on the work plan? If not, we can go on to the community engagement subcommittee report out.
Well, before you go there, Franklin, I just wanted to say how interesting and frankly pleasing it was that there was so much consistency in people's wishes and aspirations for 2024 for the group. That's awesome.
Oh, absolutely. I'm, I'm really excited about the moving to the do part. So I appreciate everybody's comments along those lines. Really excited about the opportunities we have in front of us for this year.
May I ask one question before you move on?
Yes, sir.
This is for Susan or maybe Franklin and Cass, I'm not sure, but my term is ending in June. Do I, or whenever they end, do I need to reapply or how does that work for somebody that exists? Or would you like me to handle that offline?
I can give you the short version right now and then we can talk more. I'm sorry, Franklin.
Yeah, glad.
So the short version is yes, all members do need to reapply and they'll go through the interview process. And we can send you your previous materials if that's helpful. And just, we could just follow up with me and we can, we can get you whatever you need.
Thank you.
So can I make a comment? This is Ellen. I would just add, when you're talking about getting out press releases, I think if you want people to be coming to the meetings and getting engaged, it would behoove you to do the press releases the week, week or a week or a week and a half before the actual meetings. So, and telling people what we're going to be talking about at the next meeting. And maybe saying, you know, in our last meeting, we covered this, but in the future meeting, we're going to be talking about these, these different whatever topics. Because that way it gives people a chance to actually come to the meetings, not just read about what happened. Because that way it gives people a chance to actually come to the meetings, not just read about what happened in the meeting. If that makes any sense. So as a citizen watching what's going on in Clark County, it's always horrible to read that something just happened. If it's something that you might want to take part in. And so from my standpoint, I would rather read an article about what the Commission on Aging is talking about next week, when I have a chance to actually come versus, oh, last week they talked about this. If that makes any sense.
No, thank you, Ellen. That's an excellent point. So we're going to take that into, into consideration. And try and schedule these press releases out of more advantageous time to ensure that people have the opportunity to either participate or to attend.
Yep. And it's, once you have a list of who your contacts are that you're sending press releases to, it makes it so much easier to just boom, 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 send them out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about initially. So I appreciate that comment.
Thanks.
Okay, can we go ahead and go to the Community Engagement Subcommittee Report? Yes?
Thank you, Franklin. I think that's me, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure. I just wanted to let you guys know that I have been in contact with Christina at ADSWA. And they have updated their rack cards and they're sending them to the printing presses. So we will have them shortly and be able to get them out to the libraries pretty much immediately. The libraries are just waiting for us to get them there. And I'm working on an email that I haven't had a chance to complete today because I kept getting diverted, that I'm going to send to all the local jurisdictions to figure out how to accomplish placement there. So that's the update on that.
Okay, thank you. Who's, who's on this Community Engagement Subcommittee?
I think it was Justin, Ken, myself, correct? And, and Dick, I believe, is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any more comments about Amy's report? Okay, can we move on to new business and the 2024 Annual Report? And also their prep for the February meeting with the County Council?
Absolutely. So we just today got a copy, a draft copy back from our graphic designer who laid out all of the text that we sent to you previously. And once we review this and make sure that there's, you know, it all looks okay, we'll send it for printing and it will be ready prior to the February meeting. And we usually distribute it to the counselors prior to that meeting so they can have it. And hopefully take a look at it prior to the the joint meeting. And I don't have a lot more on the annual report, other than just to let you know it's, we're continuing to work on it. Maybe you can see the, that was the cover and we've got the message from the chair. And the outline of the Aging, Aging Readiness Plan adoption. And some general information that we always have in the annual report, the mission and the members. And then the Silver Citizen recipient, a little bit more about the it's usually about the work from, from the previous year. And so a lot of it this year is about the Aging Readiness Plan. And then the 2023 Work Plan that you developed for the end of the year. And then the last page is a table that shows all of the applicable strategies from the plan and things that were done in the community by the commission, but also by other jurisdictions that helped move the plan forward. So I guess I would say one thing that we'd like you to be thinking about. You know, we're working on emergency preparedness this year. But there's a lot of things going on in the community to help older adults. And so if you notice things, it would be great if you keep track of that and we can include them in our, and we do the same. Keep, keep track of them and we can include them in the annual report of things. You know, that the commission does, but also just generally in the community that are happening to help older adults. So any questions on the annual report? Okay. The February meeting with council, we sent out a draft presentation and it had everyone giving a slide or two. That's generally how we've done the presentation in the past. And we just wanted to run that by you and make sure everybody was okay with the proposal, see if you had any questions, do any sort of planning that we need to do. Hopefully we will for those who want to be, be in person and be meeting with the council in the larger hearing room for that meeting. But just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask questions and, and plan for that.
And also we usually split the report up so that each commission member has a portion of it to present. So if anyone has any issues with either think they might not be there or for whatever reason would prefer not to present, please let us know in advance. Any other discussion on the February meeting with council? Okay, well, let's move on to reports and communications. And let's start with liaison reports.
This is Ken. We've got an ADRN meeting coming up, but there's nothing new. And that's the committee that I sit and observe and report back on.
Okay. Ken and I had a call with David Hudson from the Public Health Advisory Council. And we talked about some of the issues with communicating with, with seniors in such a way to engage them and get them to be responsive to things that are discussed. We also got some links to different health information. Latest on COVID vaccinations, general vaccine information. There, there's also a link to deal with immunizations as well as some information on long-term care facilities. So if anybody is interested or need those, I will pass those links on and we can get those published in our notes. Ken, do you have anything that I missed?
No, I just think that he has been a terrific, you know, we've met with him, I think, three or four times now. And he's always enthusiastic and goes over the top to help. So I'm really pleased with that relationship and how he represents his department.
Thank you, Ken. There's going to be an in-person meeting of the Public Health Advisory Council next Tuesday that I plan to attend. And I'll give you some feedback. I don't know if you are available, Ken, but we can talk about that offline.
Now.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I don't know if that's the right form to bring it up in, but you're talking about immunizations. And I know there's been a lot of concern because even though the highest number of people getting immunized or percentage wise or seniors, it's still a really low number for flu, RSV and COVID. And part of the problem, I think, is just the process we have now. Because you have, there's a few doctors that'll give one of those shots, but otherwise you have to set it up through the pharmacies who are already overloaded. And even if you make an appointment, which some seniors can't do if they're not computer deliverate, they may or may not have what you're wanting. They may not be able to do it. And it seems like somebody in the public health system ought to be looking about an easier way to get those vaccines out, whether it's through clinics or something, because I think a lot of the barrier, particularly for older people, but generally is, it is such a hassle to get a vaccine right now for, for those three respiratory illnesses. So I don't know if that'd be something to bring up in the Health Advisory Committee to start thinking about, but I think it's a real bear, the system we have now is a real barrier.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the main reasons I wanted to get on to that. Councils talk about their communication protocols and how they manage appointments and is there any options for how they can dispense these vaccinations? Portland has a volunteer group of doctors and nurses and other healthcare professionals called Portland Street Medicine that goes around and provides healthcare to homeless people living on the street. And they have some, some techniques that I think might be worth considering on this side of the river, as well as looking at other alternatives, like maybe a healthcare person can go along with Meals on Wheels and dispense vaccinations as they deliver meals or something like that. I'm, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying that that's even feasible yet, but just to throw out different ideas about how how we can give vaccinations to seniors in a more efficient and effective manner. So that's a great, great comment, Donna. Thank you.
Add one thing to that. This is Mel.
Yes.
My pharmacy is Walmart. And I don't have to set up an appointment. When I see nobody's there at the immunization counter, then I go in and I say, and this is for COVID, for the flu, for my shingle shots. And it's very convenient. And I go into Walmart probably once a week. And if I see no one there, I go in, I say, I want my vaccinations. I get them. It's a very, very efficient, very easy way to do it. So just wanted to add my two cents there.
Thank you, Mel. Appreciate that. That, that's a that's the kind of information that we need to try and circulate as well as provide alternatives for those people that may be shed in or don't have the freedom of mobility that most of us have. Okay, Justin, do you have a liaison report?
I guess I do. So ADSWA had their advisory council meeting this morning, or yeah, this morning, early afternoon. So I say at noon, so I, I listen in on that. They're a motivated group of people. It's always fun listening to what they're talking about. I mean, this is their first meeting of the year and everybody's coming back, just kind of reporting where they're at, what they're working on currently. There was a lot of these names, these are people that some of you might know. I know they, to begin with Pearl Blackburn was out of Waukeah County, was recognized just by everybody singing their praises for her major contributions over the years while serving on the advisory council. And she was on today, again, as just a guest, because she's stayed involved. And she's just, Christina called, touted her as the get stuff done woman. And she's just been a profound community leader, it sounds in that area. I've never met her personally, but from the things that people were saying in the group, just really appreciating her. So there's a gentleman there who's a guest today named Kevin Callahan, and I believe he was at our last, one of our last meetings that we had too. But he appears to be new to the community or newer to the community, but he has a pretty profound background and like 30 years' experience dealing with government agencies, working within the institutions. And he seems very motivated and eager to be a part, participant in ADSWA, but also he mentioned wanting to be involved in, in the Grishon Aging. So if we're looking for new members, he might be somebody that we would invite to apply, if he hasn't already. Other people, I mean, they kind of go through their list of their different representatives in the different areas that ADSWA that ADSWA serves, I mean, I suppose, the different counties. So a lady named Mary Rapar, who's, who's new to the council there too, had a lot to talk about in regards to just housing and rent increases and her personal experiences when, you know, her rent doubled all of a sudden. And, you know, she found herself displaced and the struggle she went through. And just wanted to highlight that they were still having a lot of problems with rent increases across the board and seniors becoming homeless, as we well know. Joe out of La Center was talking about how La Center doesn't have much of a senior resource. However, he's been talking about a proposed a senior center in La Center and they actually have identified the city's available abilities, buildings that they could use. So their ADSWA actually said that they'd be willing to help with that. They're trying to start a 501(c) nonprofit and ADSWA said they might be able to help with funding some of the salary for the dedicated staff that would have to work for that. So that's promising. Out of Kathlammitt, Kathy Burgess was talking more about, again, the push for to try to keep the conversation in motion about getting high school classes for caregivers. And we know that Kelsa Longview did it, but it seems to be kind of dropping off the map at other people's locales, especially throughout the state. I guess that our southwest Washington AAA is the only one that seems to be showing a lot of interest in that. So Mike actually chimed in about that. Mike Reardon is the director and mentioned that it's important that they try to keep this in conversation so it doesn't lose traction because it is a big piece of the puzzle for the future workforce in regards to taking care of our seniors. What else? Diane Kraft, one of their members, problem highlight is talking about quick discharges from hospitals nowadays and people not having anywhere to go because the hospitals wanted to get them out of there quickly for, to bring other people in. And they're trying to rapidly discharge people after surgeries that need rehabilitation. And there's just not enough adequate rehab facilities for everybody. So just another highlight on problems that we have within the system.
That's an odd one, Justin, because the average census in skilled nursing, which are rehab facilities is less than 80% in Clark County. So there are available.
Interesting.
That would be, that would be it's not our issue, but it'd be a very interesting thing to find out what that disconnect is.
Well, Diane's in Longview, so I'm guessing she's highlighting primarily scenarios that they're having in the Longview market as opposed to the Clark County market.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
So no, no problem, no problem. That's good. That's a good stat, actually, locally, because I hear a different story sometimes on the street. Everybody says it's hard to find placements and places to go, but I think there's also different levels of rehab facilities based upon income levels and accessibility. You know, there's what your insurance will cover. I've, I've seen the spectrum on both ends too, that there's some very undesirable places you can go to recover and some very nice ones that not everybody has the means to be able to attend. So there's a, there is a lady, a Kaiser social worker is actually named Jody Oliver is over at ADSWA as well coordinated with them. And she was in the, in the conversation with that. So and then the two new members there over at ADSWA, Shelley Baxter and Mary Rapar, ones from White Salmon. And there was a lot of conversation. She was bringing up a point that she has an old lady that lives up a dirt road by herself and needs, you know, she's trying to get social services. And needs, you know, she's trying to get social services, but there's, she's so far out that no one's really, it's out of everybody's service area and what they're going to do about that. So I just thought that was interesting. How many people there are that live, you know, very rural, very remote, disconnected, even though, I mean, even in Clark County, there's places like that. I mean, I live out in the woods too. Place is not far from me and where nobody would go, you know, unless you were invited or you knew where you were going. So it'd be easy for seniors to get lost in the woods, so to speak. And other than that, they kept, they, they were running over because everybody was rambling, probably as I am. Mike Reardon kind of cut his stuff short, but he did want to highlight the fact that, uh, two things. Uh, they had the Calis, Waukeah County does what they call their Senior Hero Award, I think, which is very similar to our Senior Silver Citizens Award. And they just had that recently up there. And then two house bills, 1702 and 5686, basically talking about allocating a portion of or a slight increase in sales tax that would go to fund senior programs. So people are looking for places to, uh, things to vote on and support. He's recommending that those two bills are both bills that maybe we should keep an eye on. And then the last note that I just thought was a very, well, two kind of highlights. I mean, the, the, the theme of senior vulnerability, just keep that in your mind, seems to come up often in many different ways. I just kind of wrote that down as a note. And then what was her name? I think it was, I think it was Mary that actually said, was saying that keeping people in their homes benefits the local economy. And I thought that was an interesting statement to kind of just think about that as well. How rather than people go into assisted living facilities, which are often ran and owned by large corporations, if now, if instead we found ways to keep people in their homes and have resources that are local, go into them to serve them, essentially it would be keeping that money in the community as opposed to disappearing to, you know, corporate level profits. So. I just thought that was an interesting point that might inspire and motivate people to, or local politicians and policymakers to consider how the advantages of supporting these initiatives that we propose are also good for the local economy and economic standpoint. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Justin. That was very comprehensive. Appreciate you reporting out on that and then making these, these meetings. So thank you very much. Any other reports or communications?
Glenn, do you want me to talk here about the issue there in Battleground or you want to wait for the next meeting?
Um, let's let's wait for the next meeting because we're
Okay.
we're running about, about time. So I want to give people a chance to take a break before they go on to the next meeting. But thank you for bringing that up though. One, one quick thing. Earlier Susan had talked about proposing, we were proposing to move the retreat back a few months. And I'd appreciate if Donna, Justin, Dick isn't here, but Ken and Ellen, please send your thoughts about that, good or bad, to Susan, Amy, Cass and myself, because we're talking about this. But I want to get, get some feedback, especially from the new members to see how you feel about that and, and to what extent it would make a difference. So that's, that's your homework after the meeting is over. But I appreciate you guys getting your thoughts back to me as, as new members. So thank you. Uh, anything else before we adjourn the meeting?
Real quick, this is Justin. In regards to that retreat, um, what exactly is this? Is this a destination place that we're going to? Or is that just something that happens at the county? And how much time, what's the timeframe on that? Is that a one day? Is that a three days? What exactly is that?
Oh, you should have joined us in the Bahamas last year.
I vote for Hawaii.
Don't believe any of you now, so that's great.
We can maybe get some cutouts of palm trees on the walls or something.
Yeah. Not to disappoint, but it's not going to be quite that glamorous. So it's usually a, a one, one day. It's a, it's a meeting that we basically devote to having a retreat so that we use the time for the work session and the regular meeting to spend time acclimating and orienting new members to what we do.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, being nothing else, I want to thank you all for a great work session. Uh, see you all back at 4:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Susan, you want to?
Good afternoon. I will now call this virtual meeting, public meeting of the Clark County Commission on Aging to order. It's January 17th, 2024. My name is Franklin Johnson and I'm the Chair of the Commission. Due to inclement weather, this meeting of the Clark County Commission on Aging is being held online only. Please be advised that other event participants cannot see or hear you unless you are acknowledged by the Commission Chair or staff and your audio is unmuted. I will be announcing the agenda items as we move through the meeting topics in case you do not have the agenda in front of you. There will be two opportunities for public comment during today's meeting. The first will take place after today's moderated fireside chat for questions and comments related to that topic. The second opportunity will be during the general public comment period. Before we get to opportunities for you to provide comment, we'll provide a short announcement of how that works. This evening's agenda is planned as follows. Approval of the agenda, approval of meeting notes, fireside chat, general public comment, and then communications and announcements. We'll start with a roll call of commission members who are present for this meeting. Commission members, please unmute your mics and say, I'm here after I call your name. As a reminder to all of us, please don't forget to mute yourself when you are not speaking. Dick Clermont. And Dick let us know that he will be absent for this meeting due to some medical issues. Cass Friedland.
I'm here.
Ken Lund.
I'm here.
Donna Mason.
I'm not there, but I'm here.
Ellen Rogers.
I am here.
Justin Ross.
I am here.
Thank you. Mel Sanchez.
Here.
Larry Smith.
I'm here.
And I'm Franklin Johnson and I'm here. So we have a quorum. Next, I'll take a motion for approval of today's meeting agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving the meeting agenda, please unmute your mics and say aye.
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 Those opposed, please unmute your any abstentions. Okay, the motion to approve the meeting agenda has passed. I'll now take a motion for approval of the November 15th meeting notes. Do I have a?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the November 15th meeting notes, please unmute your mics and say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the meeting notes have been passed and approved. Next, we'll move to our moderated discussion that focuses on our emergency preparedness theme for the year. Today, we'll be hearing about Clark Regional Emergency Services Prepare in a Year Plan. Cass Friedland will be moderating this evening's discussion. Cass?
There we go, unmuted. Thank you so much Franklin and welcome everyone to the first Fireside Chat of 2024. Quite exciting. These chats give us a chance to explore important issues facing our county in greater depth. And we use the information uncovered during our discussions to inform the work of the Commission on Aging. Each year, COA members select a chapter from Clark County's Aging Readiness Plan and bring regional and national experts to share their insights and answer questions. And with our newly updated Aging Readiness Plan in hand, we selected Emergency Preparedness as our focus for 2024. And today we are thrilled to welcome Scott Johnson, Emergency Management Division Manager for Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency, which we know as CRESSA. CRESSA's staff work with local partners to help our community prepare for, respond to, and recover from disasters. COA will be partnering with CRESSA all year and during these monthly fireside chats, our conversations will cover a wide range of topics related to emergency preparedness. At the time of Mr. Johnson's fireside chat, this timing couldn't be any better. We had originally planned on listening to his presentation in per, in person today, but nature had other plans. And how fortunate we are that Mr. Johnson is enthusiastically bringing his knowledge to this conversation via video link. Thank you again, Scott. Before we begin the presentation, I'd like to briefly tell you a bit about Mr. Johnson's extensive experience bringing leadership to challenging situations. In 2008, Scott retired after 22 years of military experience, which included operational deployments in the first Persian Gulf War and service in Iraq in 2003, 2004. He also completed deployments for two humanitarian support deployments. Before joining CRESSA in 2013, Scott worked in aerospace manufacturing. Mr. Johnson is a FEMA certified master exercise practitioner and emergence response team trainer, as well as a graduate of the FEMA Professional Development Series and holds a master's degree in management and leadership. I can also say that Scott is a wonderful patient educator, having generously spent over an hour with Franklin and I during the informational visit to CRESSA last week. So with that, we would like to welcome you, Scott.
Thank you, Cass. Thank you very much. And I appreciate this opportunity to speak to everybody. The weather kind of prevented us from doing it in person, but again, like I said, I'm glad that we're able to do it safely from wherever everybody is at this moment. So with that, if everybody can hear me okay, can I get a thumbs up if everybody's able to hear me okay? All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about how we in Clark County can increase our individual, our collective, neighborhood and community resilience to emergencies and natural disasters. So the next slide, please. Thing that becomes important when we start thinking about what is going to happen to us in Clark County is to understand what's going to happen to us in Clark County. Uh, the good news is for those of you who've been stocking up on your tsunami kits, the threat in Clark County of tsunamis is actually pretty low. Um, winter weather preparation, on the other hand, that's something that we should all probably make sure that we're ready for. But that's the key thing is start with the things that we know are going to happen to us each year. Heavy rain and flooding, winter weather and power outages. Then we go to the things that are probable, but maybe not as likely, such as the situation we're experiencing now. It's very impactful. Thankfully, it's not as common as it is in other parts of the state or nation. Then the things that are possible but less likely. And finally, those things that although they're very frightening and very impactful, they're actually less common. But here's kind of the way that preparedness works. If I'm ready and prepared mentally and with training, plans and equipment for the small things, I've actually laid the foundation for preparedness for the large and big things. Because it's the same process. What are those things that I need to do for myself, my family, my neighborhood to get through the first five minutes of whatever type of adverse experience that I'm going through? If I can get through the first five minutes, I can get through the next five minutes. If I can get through the first 10 minutes, then I can get through the first hour. Because if I'm not ready and not prepared to get through the first 10 minutes, I'm not going to be able to get through the first hour. And so that's why preparing for rain, winter weather, any of these things helps lay the foundation for those large impactful events. Next thing, please. Next slide, please. So one of the key learning points with this is we're not trying to boil the ocean. By that, I mean, there's actually a methodology to boil the ocean. Um, were we in person and it were easy, I would ask if anybody knows how to boil the ocean. The answer is one cup at a time. We know oftentimes that when people see something on the news, they hear of an event, they decide that they're going to get ready, they're going to get prepared. I'm going to build that preparedness kit that I meant to build last time. And they'll go online and they'll research the topics and it becomes really overwhelming. They see these lists that list dozens and dozens of items. They can go down to Costco and spend $300 on a bucket of doom that's packed full of all sorts of stuff that does who knows what. And it can become overwhelming. And so that impetus, that drive to create a disaster preparedness kit becomes number six on your top five list of things to do. It's always that thing that I mean to do later. And so the methodology that we try to share with people at CRESSA is instead trying to boil the ocean, how do we do it one cup at a time? And we found that's a little bit more practical. It's something that's actually manageable. It's something that people can wrap their mind and their resources about around. So that's what we like to talk to tonight. Next one, please. Next, thank you. So I'm going to ask everyone, can you give me 30 minutes a month? And I don't mean me literally. Can you dedicate 30 minutes a month of your time to improve your own resilience? Can you take 30 minutes of your time each month to look at one focused topic and ask yourself, how am I as an individual? How am I as part of my family? How am I as part of my neighborhood? How am I as part of my larger community, ready to deal with this need in an emergency? We've broken them down into these categories and we'll go into them in a little bit more depth. But it's water. Essentially, we need one gallon per person per day. Two, in February, we look at food. Ideally, 14 days of stuff you'll eat. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Three, sanitation. Four, first aid. Five, lighting. Six, shelter. Seven, some communication tips and tricks. Eight, tools. Nine, clothing. We get to October, we talk about mapping your neighborhood. We'll talk a little bit more about that too. 11th in November, documentation, digitalization. And then in Christmas, when we were all sitting around contemplating the holidays, putting it together and see what we need to do for the next year. So now I'd like to take a little time and go into these in a little bit more depth. Next one, please. So the first thing, avoid this, avoid going and buying these prepackaged, pre-made kits. The reason I say that is each of us knows our needs better than anybody else. How many of us have dietary issues? How many of us maybe have medical issues? How many of us have skills and abilities or limitations that these kits? How many of us have skills and abilities or limitations that these kits don't address? We refer to these as the one size fits none. Because these kits are made with a generic model in mind, and they're not as good as the kit you can put together for you and your family. So again, don't go down to your local retailer and buy the $200 bucket of doom. Instead, spend that time and that energy putting together something that's more tailored for you and your family and your needs. So, next one? There we go. All right. Water, one gallon per person per day for consumption. It's pretty much the baseline. Now let's start with where are we going to store it? How many of you have a water heater? How many of you know you have 30 gallons of stored water in your house? How many of you just made the connection between your water heater and stored water? It's potable water. And in an emergency situation, pulling that water via hose from the bottom of your water heater, running it through some simple filtration can provide emergency water if you don't have another source. If you're aware that you're going to face a potential water outage, consider storing water, temporary containers. According to the CDC, other public health experts, normal tap water is good for up to one year if it's stored outside of regular UV light. So have water. Many of us have camping supplies, filtration systems like a Lifestrough can also be good to help filter harmful particulates out. The key thing is think about water, where you're going to have it, how you're going to get it, and the thing with it, if you do stockpile water and you say to yourself, well, what do I do with the stuff that I bought at the end of the year? Drink it. Or water your garden with it. Use it. Don't let it go to waste. But think about that. Where am I going to get my water needs? How am I going to share my water needs with my neighbors? So that's January's topic, although right now, we're not really suffering from a huge absence of liquid and precipitation. But it's something good to plan on. So, February, please. Next slide. So, food. As Cass mentioned, I spent 22 years in the military. Do not get MREs. MREs do one of two things. They start you or stop you, neither of which is optimal in an emergency situation. Buy food that you're going to eat. Buy food that meets any dietary restrictions that you may have. Here's what we recommend that people do. We recommend that they take a shelf on their pantry and put a piece of blue tape on it that says emergency food. And fill that shelf with as much food as you can. If you can do two weeks, do two weeks. If you can do three, do three. But here's the reality. We have neighborhoods in Clark County where folks don't know if they're putting dinner on the table tonight. We got neighborhoods where kids in elementary school, 90-plus percent of them are free and reduced lunch. I'm not going to ask those members of our community to try to squander away two weeks, three weeks. Give me one meal. One extra box of food, whatever level of resilience that they can sustain on that shelf with the blue tape, put it up there. And if you hit a hard winter storm and you can't get to the shops and you need to eat it, that's your emergency. Use it and replenish it. We recommend that you swap it out every six months. How do you swap it out? Eat it. And then replace it. Rather than going out and buying those heavily salted, of questionable nutritional value rations, put food on there that you'll eat, okay? How many of you have four-legged furry family members? How many of you like some of your furry four-legged family members better than your two-legged family members? Told my brother, when he visits from out of state, the priority is my wife, the puppies, and then him. So make sure that you take care of your pet food, food that they're going to eat as well, because people aren't leaving their pets. Okay? So when you're thinking about food, think about that food. Also, think about a food that makes you happy. Okay? In an emergency situation, when things are dark, when things are cold, food can take on a psychological and emotional value that is stronger than its simple caloric nutritional value. So throw a chocolate bar in there. Throw that can of soup in there that just brings back that good feeling, okay? Have that you're going to eat, have as much as you can sustain. And then twice a year, when you check the batteries in your smoke detectors, because I know everybody does that, on January 2nd and July 5th, swap out the food on your shelves. All right, next slide, please. Now we're into March. All right, sanitation. Sanitation is huge. Sanitation is really, really important in an emergency. Especially if it's something where you might have to evacuate, or if it's something that's very destructive, or you're spending time outside clearing brush or do things like that. Sanitation is hugely important. Okay? We get dirt, we get germs on our hands, then we eat, we take that inside. That's no good for us. Also psychologically, just being able to wash your face and wash your hands can provide a huge psychological boost. So sanitation, first of all, have soap, have water. Something that's good, if any of you use that laundry detergent that comes in the little spigot things, next time it runs out, keep one of them. Fill it up. There's enough residual soap to make a hand washing station. It's an idea. We also recommend that you get two five-gallon buckets. Bucket number one and bucket number two. If you want to know why we numbered them that way, ask an eight-year-old. They'll explain to you, especially if it's an eight-year-old little boy. Bucket number two should also have a pool nude. Also, you can figure out why. But you take those buckets, and that's what you can use to, for waste, for going to the bathroom, because that becomes another important thing. Education, we can provide information and on our website on how to do that in a safe and sanitary manner. So don't forget sanitation. So now we're through the winter. Let's look at the spring. Next slide, please. Okay. I was at a public affairs or public information event at the Clark County Fair a couple of years ago. A gentleman came up to me, and he told me that he had just bought a 300-piece US Army Combat Medics kit for his survival kit. And I said, that's, that's great. Are you, are you a former Army Combat Medic? Nope. Are you an emergency medical technician? Nope. And dude, why did you buy a 300-piece medical kit? Because it was cool! Having a small kit with 14 medical items you know how to use is more important than having 300 items you don't. So when it comes to medical preparation, A, know what's in your first aid kit and have things in your first aid kit that are practical. If you are in fact retired US Army Combat Medic, and you want to have a 300-piece kit, great. It's of value to your neighborhood. But most importantly, have a first aid kit that you know what's in it and how it's going to work. The other thing that's important to consideration is medications or medicines. If you're able to, we recommend that people try to get meds on a 90-day supply. Some, obviously you can't, but here's the benefit of getting on a 90-day resupply. It means at least one day, you have 90 doses on hand. Hopefully, that's the day the bad thing happens, because then you're better set up for it. Talk to your pharmacist about what actual storage conditions various medications need. There's many medications that we refrigerate because it's a convenient way to keep them cool when they can actually be stored maybe in a cooled versus refrigerated condition. So talk to your pharmacist. Find out about your medications. Try to get as much of those stocked up as you can, too. Make sure your family members are aware of what your medications are, so that, again, they can help with that type of information. So next up, what's our next thing in spring? Lighting, okay? Lighting is really important. So flashlights, lanterns. I'm going to tell you a little trick. When you have your flashlight, and I think I have one here handy. Apparently, I don't. But what you do is take the batteries, take them out of the flashlight, and stick them end to end, negative to negative, and then screw the top one. Or if you store them in there in the positive to negative, put a piece of paper between them. What that will do is it will keep alkaline batteries from corroding and discharging. That way, you can store the batteries in there safer for a longer period of time. So the batteries in our emergency kit here at home, I have them stored negative to negative. I know they're in there like that. So that when I go to grab it and turn it on, I just unscrew the back, take out the back battery, drop it in, boof, it's good. Now you'll see here that we have a candle listed as an emergency light source, but there's little asterisks by it. If you have young children, if you don't have any stable surfaces, if you have the potential of having a natural gas leak, candles are a less than optimal source of lighting. So it's something you want to be real careful about. Lighting is important because it can be the foundation of us being able to see our food, see where we put the water, do first aid. So think about lighting. Think about once you've done this level of kind of internal handheld, if I needed to light a larger area, perhaps a tent or something like that. So we have one more month of spring. What's next? Shelter. All right. I would like to see a show of hands. Who? The blue tarp is the versatile item on that photo? Okay? Who thinks it's the Class C recreational vehicle? All right, I'll save you the suspense. It's the Husky trash bags. They're the most versatile because those bags are actually 40 inches tall. That's three and a half feet. They're heavy duty. They can serve as a sleeping bag. You can rip a hole in them and make a rain poncho. You can slit them down the seams, and you can use them effectively for a tarp. And you can get rolls of them for pennies. They're very, very versatile. They're a great shelter. Many of us in the Northwest spend a lot of time out recreating, so some of these things are pretty common. Tents, recreational vehicles, those are important things to have for shelter. So if you have them, keep them handy, keep them in good condition. Even if you don't, something like that Husky trash bag or something that can be turned into a modified shelter becomes really important. If you do have a recreational vehicle, make sure you seasonize it. In other words, as you get ready for the winter, make sure things are winterized, tanks are drained, keep a full tank of gas, make sure that it's ready in case you do need to use it as temporary shelter. So, next one, please? All right, summer, communication. If we have a large impactful event and you try to call somebody to let them know you're okay, you have a better chance of calling Kansas than Camas. And that's because when we have a local emergency, everybody tries to call from Vancouver to Camas, from Wushu to the battleground. The local cell lines get jammed. But very few people are trying to call farther away. So you have a better chance of getting your message through to a longer, farther distance if you have an out-of-area contact. So what we recommend that people do is find an out-of-area contact. And if he keeps sending me bad birthday gifts, I will send you my brother's address in Boise, and you can use him. Somebody that lives way out of the area, and have everybody in your family know that they need to text, because text messages take up less bandwidth, and they go through further, and they go through better. Um, have everybody in your family, your community, your neighborhood, contact that person. And then that person writes it down, and I've told my brother, if he goofs this up, I will give everybody his number. So make sure that everybody knows to contact this person. Have them be out of the way. That way, you can safely check in with somebody who's out of the area, and it's an effective way to maintain the status of who's where and where everybody is. All right, next one? So, tools. Tools are another thing where having a few tools that you know how to use are more valuable than having the entire DeWalt power line from the Home Depot. In fact, something to keep in mind, power tools are really great for convenience, but if there's no power, they're only as good as their last charge. Have multi-use tools. Pan opener is a really good tool. I have one that sits out on the cans that we have as part of our emergency supply. So it's separate from the one that's in the kitchen every day. You can get them. They're relatively inexpensive. Again, have tools that you know how to use. Make sure you know where they're at. If you have people who live and sleep on second or above stores, fire escape ladders are also part of that tool. Young family members, you've got kids or grandkids, make sure they're aware of some of these things and how to use them. Simple, safely, how to use them, but make them part of your emergency planning. So, next one, please? All right. Summertime is a good time to start looking at swapping out, or at least taking inventory of what clothes you have in your emergency kit. So pick two dates, again, two times in a year that are more practical, but start transitioning from heavy-duty clothes. If you have clothes in there because you have kids, make sure you swap them out. It's when you start thinking of what type of personal warming or cooling clothes you have in your emergency kit. So next? Hey, know who your neighbors are. They're going to be the first ones there. How many of you have seen pictures of disasters like hurricanes and tornadoes? How many of you have seen those photos from like the southeastern US? And how many times do you see people in tricked-out, real cool responder gear? And how many times do you see pictures of people in cargo shorts and LSU tank tops? Those there. Know who they are. Know what their skills are. Know what they have to contribute to your community. And we all live in different communities. We all have communities where we live, where we work, we spend our free time, where we get stuck when the bad thing happens. Try to know who your neighbors are. Know what skills they are. Share with them what skills you have. Knowing our neighbors is something that's not as common as it once was because of various technological means. But one of the things that you can do is when you go outside to look at the ice and snow, and you look across the street and your neighbor's out there, you can look at him and go, it's going to suck. But that's an opportunity to bond and talk to them about what you can do with that shared experience of how we're going to clean up from this mess. So know who your neighbors are. Share what you can do with them, and then encourage them to share what they can do for your community as a whole. Next one, please? All right, documentation. What I recommend that people do is they take one of these little inexpensive thumb drives, and they scan onto it copies of all these documents. Birth certificate, wills, mortgage documents, insurance documents, property deeds, warranty information, bank data. Okay? Then send that thumb drive to your out-of-area contact. Update it once a year and send them a new one. Now, cloud storage is an option, but the problem with cloud storage is you have to share the password. And you might have changed the password and forgot to send your out-of-area contact the password. The nice thing about doing it with the thumb drive is if everything's on there and you send it to them once a year, then if you're ever in a situation where somebody needs access to those documents or you need somebody to be able to print out those documents and take them in someplace, they're there. So that's something that we recommend people do. We also recommend you do that for anything that is of immeasurable value. Family photos, notes, anything like that, it's irreplaceable. So, the next one? So, no one can do it better than you and you're not alone. So when you start to put together your plan, start somewhere. Next slide? I'm going to plug Cressa first, you can always start with us. If you go to our website, cressan911.org, under emergency management, there's a lot of good information. Some of these things that we've shared here this evening that will show you on how you can begin preparing in these small ways. Ready.gov and the CDC, Red Cross, other organizations also have good information on where to start. But don't let yourself get overwhelmed. Don't allow the whole enormity of it. Don't allow, oh my gosh, I have so much to do to overwhelm it. Just start by taking thirty minutes a month. Focus on one thing at a time. And then, over the course of time, you will increase your resilience as an individual. You'll decrease your family's resilience. And then you'll start increasing the resilience of the communities that you're a part of. So, next one please? So, here's what I want you all to do as soon as the weather dries out and permits it. What I want you to do is I want you to build what we call the boil the ocean bag. And I want you to put it in the glove compartment of your car. Okay? Normally I tell people to do this within forty-eight hours of this presentation, but given the weather condition, I'm going to give you guys ninety-six. And the reason I give a timeline is because I know if they don't, it will become number six on their top five and it will stay there right until they get stuck in traffic and wish they had some of these things. So in a one gallon zipper lock bag, put a sixteen ounce bottle of water, little snack bar, a twelve inch by twelve inch piece of aluminum foil folded into fourths, a four foot length of two ply toilet paper, couple of heated bandages, two aspirin or Tylenol, acetaminophen, whatever. A small disposable little keychain flashlight, the ones you get at promos are great. Small pad of sticky notes, um, two crayons, some fingernail clippers with a file, and then two feet of electrical or duct tape. Throw it all in there and throw it in your glove compartment. What you've just done is you've just created twelve, twelve hours of emergency resilience in your car. You've just created something that if you find yourself stuck in a situation, you have some resilience. About four or five years ago, might have been a little bit longer now, we had a landslide that blocked I-5 north, just north of Woodland. Do you guys remember that? Yeah. There was a corresponding landslide on Highway thirty that blocked a lot of people from coming that way. We had people from the greater Vancouver, Portland area that spent close to twenty hours stuck in traffic. We had done this presentation, we had somebody get ahold of us and say that she did this. She, she did this and she said it was amazing how just having these few simple things helped ratchet down her anxiety and ratchet down her fear. See, and that's a big part of what preparedness is about. The greatest fear we have as human beings is fear of the unknown. And when emergencies or disasters happen, there's so much we don't know that it can become overwhelming. But if I do know that I have a little bit of supplies in my car, I know I have a little bit of supplies around the house, then I've ratcheted down the fear of the unknown a degree because I know what I have and I know how to use it. So next one please, next slide? Okay, so um, I will now open it up for questions, discussions, witty observations.
Thank you, thank you so much Scott. Okay, um, let's do some questions.
I've got one, Cass.
I have a question. Um, at, at the very beginning of your presentation, you talked about probable, likely different situations people might face. And of course, we know flooding, snow, so forth. But I'm curious why earthquake has moved to the bottom of the list? Because for years, the emphasis um, of emergency preparedness and Cressa has been how to get ready for the big one because we know there'll be an earthquake someday.
Because there'll be an earthquake someday. We will have winter weather again next year. We will have extreme heat this year. We will have fire danger this year. One of the things that we've learned about our messaging is that if we constantly focus on that it could happen anytime, but it may never happen in your lifetime, then people tend to put preparing for it. It's always something I'll do tomorrow. It's always something I'll do tomorrow. But if I tell you that we're going to have winter weather this year and we're going to have winter weather again next year, there's an urgency and a proximity to that event that makes it more likely that people will prepare for it. And we've also learned that if people have the basic emergency supplies and skills to deal with five days of winter isolation, if they understand how to function in that blackout, then they have some of the fundamental skills to be able to effectively respond individually and part of the and as part of the community to a larger, more impactful. So that's why on that slide, earthquake, although it is very impactful and very destructive, is not as high up as some of the ones that we know are going to happen.
But the reality is, is everything that you do for the winter or the summer or the spring or pick a season, pick the regular stuff, all of that's good stuff to have in the case of the big one as well.
Yes, it is.
I mean, one of the, so I grew up as an adult grew up um, leading in scouts. And we got to the point where Todd had brought on every, another backpacking trip. But we made them pack and unpack their trip, their packs in the dark because we wanted them to build comfort around what happens if I can't, right? And so, you know, one of your points in comfort is drilling it so you understand when just, when you get that sense of panic, you take a deep breath and say, hold it, I know how this goes.
One of the things that we recommend, and that's a key point, one of the things we recommend is if you have kids that are around the house, get them involved in this, help them, have them help you put the kit together. Break out the kit when the lights flicker. Break out the kit as soon as snow starts falling. Even if all you do is break it out, inventory it and put it right back. You're building a familiarity with it and a comfort with it that makes it a more useful tool for when you need it in a moment of more severe need.
Larry?
Yeah.
Go on.
Uh, Scott, thank you for your presentation. Uh, one of the things that comes up often uh, with, with me and my uh, son-in-law, he works for TriMet. He has two brothers that work for TriMet and he has had a dad that worked at TriMet thirty years. And we talked, chatted about this because you know, when you look at, uh, you know, we got folks that work over there in Portland, a great number of folks. Is uh, that bridge, both those bridges having a, something going wrong with them. And hey, of course, he, what he says, you know, the, the biggest desire is, is those folks on the other side of the river to get home to their families, to help their families. And they have discussed what they should be carrying in the back of the car. In fact, he was telling me the other day that, that many of the individuals in their cars have rafts. They actually have boats rafts, so they blow it up, park their car on the other side, the north side of the river and get home. And I was just curious, are there other things you ought to consider when having that type of relationship where you have your population on the other side of a river or a barrier that you speak of, that we ought to be aware of? Is anything that comes up along that line?
Yeah, it comes up all the time and we recommend that you stay where you're at for at least twenty-four hours.
Ah.
Um, and I know that's hard.
Yep.
When a bad thing happens, each and every one of us as a human being goes through a three-stage assessment process. I can tell every one of you what you're going to do if we had an earthquake right now. First thing you would do is you would do a self-assessment, am I okay? It's just basic human nature. What's funny is that you could be severely physically compromised, but mentally, if you're still in the fight, you might be able to be an effective responder. The reverse is true as well. Then you become really involved in the wellbeing of the people in your immediate vicinity. Not because we became better human beings. It's like that old joke, two guys are walking through the woods and they see a bear. First guy says to the second guy, I don't have to outrun the bear, I just have to outrun you. We learn better with adversity collectively than singularly. And then once I'm okay and the people around me, okay, I want to know the people I care about, the people I care about, I can't see. I want to know they're okay. And that can be an overwhelming drive and desire. The challenge that we have, and we know this from damaged infrastructure that's happened in countries like Japan and other places in South America. When you have people that are trying to traverse a lot of damaged infrastructure, they're often driven by fear. Their fear of what's happened or could have happened to their loved ones makes them make bad decisions. Maybe that street light isn't energized, maybe that bridge is going to hold me, maybe that building's not going to collapse. And there's about a thirty percent chance that you're going to increase your chances of becoming a victim if you take those risks. And again, that's stuff we know from looking at people in other countries because they're letting that fear drive them. You might be successful in rowing your raft across the Columbia. The Columbia that's going to be full of hazardous material, floating debris. It could be full of other hazards and the stability of the two banks you're trying to get across. And then once you do even get across, again, trying to cross all that uh, damaged infrastructure. What we recommend for people who live on one side and work on the other is that they have at least twenty-four hours of resilience on both sides. So have a kit in your car that would keep you safe for twenty-four hours. That doesn't mean everything's going to be rosy in twenty-four hours. But at the end of twenty-four hours, we will have a better sense of what some safe routes are that people can travel to begin crossing the river. We know that we send about a hundred K south a year and they send about thirty or forty north. And those numbers are only getting bigger. So reuniting people across the river is a really big part of our public safety planning. But we know that it's going to take us a little bit of time to kind of establish those routes. So I think it's great that they have thought about it and they've taken those precautions. Generally, we recommend that people have the ability to stay safe on either side for about twenty-four hours.
He told me that, and it's a plus side, that TriMet, uh, he's a facility, uh, he manages a station, which manages a bus drivers, so forth. They have started to stockpile their facility there with emergency supplies. They have really started to look at that uh, for a variety of different reasons. So there's a real increased effort to make sure there's emergency preparedness. They'll certainly take care of the drivers and uh, the workers for, for TriMet. So good.
And that's excellent because those guys are actually going to be key responders. Because if I do get the two oh five bridge open, it's not going to be open for general traffic. It's going to be open for mass transit because we want to get as many people over at the smallest impact as possible. So people like Public Works, Public Utilities and Public Transport Personnel, having them have that resilience at their work sites, that's really important, that's great. And they're going to need that because like I said, we're all human beings and no matter what my job is, if I'm concerned about the wellbeing of my family, I'm not coming to work. So that's why it's important that key public safety personnel have places where they can have their families taken care of, ideally within their community, or places where they can go. And if that means bringing them to work so they can be safe, so that somebody who's a TriMet operator or a PUD operator can get out and help get restoration going, that's a key thing. I think that's great.
Good, good, thank you.
Scott, thank you.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
This is Cass. Um, so Scott, the, thank you for framings, the importance of psychology in this, it can't be understated. Um, certainly in, in trying to get people to, to, to think ahead, but think safely as well and resist the urges oftentimes that there are to get up and move, but also focusing on the practical solutions here. So, um, you know, I know that, that in both our conversation last week, uh, with, you know, you, you sharing your thoughts with Franklin and I, but also today, you know, that idea of knowing your neighbors and, you know, the resilience of community. Um, for those folks who, who don't have neighbors or, you know, they're, they're, they're living in very rural areas, do you have any examples of how there have been networks built to, to sort of bring in and accommodate these folks?
Yeah, most of those folks, when they live in those rural areas, they still have networks, even if they don't have neighbors. And that's still, it's still feasible for them to reach out to their network, even if their network is maybe a little bit farther away. And it's equally important because folks that live up in the Bay Area, that's Battleground, Amboy and Yakal. Um, folks who live up in the Bay Area often are able to have weeks and weeks of supplies because they have property. And that's where having a network of people that they check in with on a regular basis. Have a network of people who they may be able to move because those areas, they're rural, so the roads may be bad, but they may be passable because there's less infrastructure damage. Oftentimes they have the ability to move across country in ways that are less feasible in a heavy, dense urban environment. The important thing is that they should have a network of people and have some plans in place that if this happens, we're all going to try to come here and we're going to bring our resilience here. Or once I'm safe here, I'm going to go check on you here. The key is that they're reaching out through their networks to ensure that needs are met across that network.
Wonderful, thank you. And I only have one, one other question, um, breaking in because I know others have questions. Um, the wonderful, the boil the ocean bag, do you know, are there groups that put any of these together to donate to others?
Um, I'm not aware of any groups that put them together to donate, but I am aware of businesses or other groups that have kind of done it as a collaborative competition. So I know of a local business that has a safety fair once a year. And what they do is they assign a different team within the company to bring in an item. And they do their safety briefing, they have a picnic, and then they collaboratively build their boil the ocean bags.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there questions?
This is Justin, I have a question for you, Scott.
Sure.
Great presentation, by the way, I'm uh, similar to you, I'm ex-military, ex-hospital corpsman, lots of experience in emergency.
So you get to have the three hundred, you get to have the three hundred piece kit.
Hundred percent, already got it. My question is, and this is, may not be what we want to present necessarily to our senior population, but my question to you is, in the training that you provide, is there any provision or any slide maybe that we're not being shown in regards to personal safety, self-defense, things of that nature?
Um, no, and there's kind of a reason for it. Um, what we've discovered is in emergency situations, in disasters, people do tend to rise to the occasion. And it's not that we become better people. If you live in a functioning neighborhood before an event, you're generally going to be in a functioning neighborhood after an event. And that's got to do with the fact that predatory behavior, human or otherwise, is based on two things. It's based on isolation and weakness. And so one of the reasons we encourage neighborhood resilience and people getting to know their neighborhoods is that removes those two um, foundations of predatory behavior. If you come together collectively as a neighborhood, you're not isolated and you have more strength through um, just your sheer numbers. One of the things that we also know is when we see emergencies, and this is very common along the Gulf Coast of Florida, you'll see reports of like a lot of predatory behavior in the aftermath of uh, tornadoes and hurricanes. Those are vacation communities. Those are usually communities where you have people that come in for a short time and exit. Those are also communities where because of the geography, people are able to come into the impacted area, loot and then leave. We don't have a lot of that. Nobody right now is going to drive down Highway 84 and try to loot Corbett. Because nobody's moving down 84. So our geography doesn't lend itself to that. And that's especially another key factor in large events like an earthquake. So the reason that we don't touch on it is because we have seen in emergency management that the best defense against antisocial behavior is that knowing who your neighbors are and creating too big a target for predatory behavior. Predatory behavior, again, isolation and weakness. It's a return on investment game for predators. So the goal is to get them to move along, go find that neighborhood that's not prepared.
Got it, makes a lot of sense. Thank you for answering that.
Yeah.
Ellen.
Hi, I would also say great presentation. I'm listening to it as a person who's sitting out in Waukeaham County right now in a house without heat that wasn't totally not prepared at all for what happened and ready to head back to Clark County where hopefully it's not icing over at the moment. But is there, do we have a, do you have a presentation like that that's more senior-focused or aging citizen-focused? That isn't so such a huge, like, you know, like huge five gallon buckets of water kind of a thing? Do you have a presentation that's more focused on like, what do you do if you're an individual living alone or something like that?
So that's actually what we're going to talk about next time we meet.
Oh, good.
So this presentation was kind of to introduce the concept. But the mechanics of how we build those kits, the mechanics of what they look like for a single person living in an apartment in downtown Vancouver versus a family of four, regardless of your age or economics, those look very different. And so one of our public education coordinators who does a great job of teaching people how to build a kit, what does it look like? And she has a lot of great ideas and tips on tricks on, okay, I am of a certain age and I live in this condition. How can I effectively do this? Because the steps are the same. Water, food and things like that. It's just putting them together to meet your needs and situations.
Cass, I don't know if you could see this, but Franklin and Larry have had their hands up for a little while.
I did not see them. Okay, Franklin, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. I was struggling to find my unmute button. First of all, thank you again, Scott, for this really vital information. It's really very helpful. I've got three questions to ask. First of all, when a situation occurs where you're isolated from your family, like one side of the river versus the other, could you talk about some communication strategies of how to connect or at least how to know that the people you really care about are safe?
Sure. So the out-of-area contact becomes really, really important. So again, identify that family member, that friend, somebody that's way out of the area. Personal example, my brother lives in Meridian, Idaho, outskirts of Boise. And so my wife, myself, my daughter, we all text him when something happens. In fact, my daughter texted him the other day, literally two days ago, to let him know she was fine. Just because that was part of the family plan. So yeah, having that out-of-area contact becomes really, really key. And then sure that people on both sides of the river have that high degree of preparedness so that even if you're not able to establish contact, you're confident that they're okay because they have the knowledge, skills, tools and ability.
Okay, thank you. The other, the other two questions I have, how do you talk to your family, especially if you have, you know, children? How do you talk to them about this whole thing without scaring them? And then how do you talk to seniors to get them to actually engage?
So start with the kids and start with snow. See, snow is not as frightening to a child because Annie said the sun will come out tomorrow. Because it can be kind of fun, but as we all know as adults, snow can be as destructive or impactful as any other event. The tools that you have when you lay the foundation, have a child help you create your water supply. Have the child understand how to use the emergency food can opener. Have them there when you break out the kit. Make it part of their training. Make them proud that they know where the emergency kit is, they know how to use the flashlight. Do those things so that when the bad thing happens, their first instinct is can we bust out the kit? Can we go get the kit? I know it's in the emergency kit. So that's why we use snow events like the one we're having a lot in our training. Because we've all experienced it. It doesn't have the unknown the way other events do. And that's also the same methodology that we use with seniors. Is how, you know, if I were speaking to a group of seniors who were skeptical, I would ask them how much they enjoyed the MLK 2024 winter storm. How much fun was it being stuck in your house for five days? And then talking about what they can do to make it less arduous next time. And again, focusing on those small steps, really going back to that 30 minutes a month, preparing a year, one step at a time.
Franklin, you're muted.
Thank you, Scott. Really appreciate your feedback.
Yeah.
And before we move to our audience participation, Larry, is your hand raised from the last time or do you have another question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I have a request, I have a request.
Yes, no.
I don't know how to raise the hand there, I'm sorry. Scott, that was a phenomenal presentation. And I don't know if my question is, or it's not a question, my request is to you or to Susan. But while you're, we get the rest of the people that may be involved, can we back up these slides 30 seconds at a time so I can take screenshots of them? I know they're available elsewhere, but I really would like to have screenshots of these. Is that possible?
I can send you the presentation in just a PDF format, if that works. Or whatever, let's connect afterwards, Mel, and I'll get them to you however works best.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Is perhaps at this point, if it's, if it's okay with everyone on the commission, again, thank you, Scott. Maybe Franklin, might this be time for the commission to take questions from audiences? And the questions would be related to this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Cass. Just a quick comment on your question. Now, these meetings are taped and rerun several times on CV TV. So you can watch it again and take pictures of this as it's broadcast on your TV. So that's just FYI. Okay, now we would like to open the floor for public comment and questions related to the presentation that our guest gave. We request that any comments made or done within three minutes to accommodate time for all speakers. We also request that before you make your comment, you state your name for the record. Staff, can you please provide instructions on how to make public comment and then unmute those of you who are wishing to speak?
Absolutely. If you're using a computer or the WebEx application on a tablet or smartphone, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. There are instructions on the screen or there will be soon. Amy, if you can bring those up.
I'm trying.
Yes. I'll just pause for a second.
Sorry, I have 100 things on my screen right now.
We've had a lot of documents up today, so no worries.
Sorry.
So
Sorry.
You'll see the instructions here in just a minute. And typically the hand icon is located towards the bottom of your screen. But you may need to click on the icon that looks like a circle with three dots in order to see the raised hand icon.
I'm looking for the...
Do you, do you need me to bring it up?
I'm looking, really, I got it.
There we go. Okay. So look for the hand icon towards the bottom of your screen or for the circle with three dots in order to see the raise hand option. For anyone on the telephone, please dial star three on your phone's number panel to raise your hand. Staff will be able to see your hand once they are raised and will request to unmute you one at a time. And Christina has her hand up. Christina, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you. Good evening, Scott. My name is Christina Murneris and with the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. Thank you for your presentation. And you're actually on my list of contacts next week regarding some opportunities to perhaps collaborate. But I was wondering if you could just share briefly what Smart, is it Smart 911? Is that a way that we can kind of indicate contact information and any special needs that we might have? And share that with us?
Yes, it is. So Smart 911 is a feature that we offer and you can sign up for Smart 911 by going to our website, crescent911.org. And Christina, yeah, please reach out to me next week and we'll talk about how we can maybe do a little bit easier outreach so that people can sign up for it. But essentially what Smart 911 is, when you dial those three digits and you are registered with Smart 911, a screen pops up in front of our dispatchers and it tells them any pertinent information you would want them to know. Gate codes, if you live in a secured community. It could tell them if you have a family member that's on oxygen. It could tell them if you have a family member that has mobility issues. It could let them know that you might have a member or someone in your home that has cognitive awareness issues. Anything that you would want a first responder to know as they're arriving, any medications you're on. Now, the great thing about that information is that it is protected from public information release. It cannot be screenshotted and it is only visible to the dispatchers for about the first 90 seconds of the call. So it's intended for members of the community to share with us vital information that they would like first responders to know en route. So you can find it on our website, crescent911.org. But yeah, Christina, let's try to get together after Snowmageddon and see how we can help effectively to get that word out.
Sounds great. Thank you so much, Scott. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, I am not seeing any additional raised hands.
Okay, well, thank you, Christina, for your comments and questions. We'll now go back to the commission and let our moderator, Cass, close out the fireside chat.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Again, Scott, oh my goodness. You know, I think people are going to have a million questions by the time they wake up in the morning when they've had a chance to process everything. But thank you for bringing this incredibly timely and essential information to our first fireside chat together. We look forward to a new chat in March where we will all learn how to create our own personalized emergency kit.
And we're looking forward to that too. Thank you. And please, everybody stay warm and safe. And I now have to go to a coordination call to talk about bad weather. Thank you very much again for the opportunity. Look forward to working with the council on this topic for the year. Please have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, we will now move on to the next agenda item, general public comment. We request that any comments made are done within three minutes to accommodate time for all speakers. We also request that before you make your comment, state your name for the record. Staff, can you provide instructions on how to make public comment and please unmute those wishing to speak? And do we have anyone else besides Christina?
We do have some people online, so I'll quickly read the directions again. If you're using a computer or WebEx application on a mobile device, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. There are instructions about how to do this on the screen. For anyone on the telephone, please dial star three on your phone's number panel. And I'll give everybody just a moment. I am not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, so we have, we have no one with raised hands?
That's right. I think we can end the public comment period.
Okay. Well, this concludes the general public comment portion of this meeting. Are there any communication or announcements? That's even you, commission members. Do any of you have any communication or announcements?
I do, Scott. Franklin.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, to get the new members caught up with this, in Battleground on 20th Street, there is a senior apartments and there's access to Albertson's, but there's a lot of traffic there. There's no access to Walmart. The sidewalk has not been completed. And the city of Battleground, I guess I should have said that first. In the city of Battleground, they have set aside money to complete that sidewalk. And they're waiting for the studies to go through so they can continue with that. Their concern is that the State Department of Ecology will negate that sidewalk because it's right alongside a wetlands. And what I request is that we put forth a letter that advocates for this sidewalk and to have the reason. Troy McCoy, one of the city councilmen, has asked that I go with him to Olympia so that we can lobby the Department of Ecology to get the sidewalk through. It's one of their top priorities, it's something they want to get done. And so I'm requesting that we come through with a letter. And I don't know when that department is coming through, but it may be within the next month. So that's what I would like to have us do as a commission. And I would like to get everybody's approval on that.
Does that require a motion, Franklin?
Yes, I think it does.
So moved. That's Ken.
Okay, that's Justin.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussions about this before we vote on it?
I have. This is Donna. And it's a question for staff, are, is that an appropriate activity for, I'm not questioning the validity at all, but it's in essence a lobbying activity? And is that something that needs to be run through whoever the county is using? And is that something that needs to be run through whoever the county is using as a lobbyist or is that within our scope of activity?
So this is Susan. That's a very good question. We, as staff, let me start with a little bit of an explanation. I might have to look into the the bylaws and ask some questions about lobbying because that's a good, that's a good point. We did contact the city of Battleground to try to find out more about the wetland situation. And we did get an email. Amy, Amy made this contact. And so please jump in here, Amy, if you want to make any comments. But so they are working on the design for this project and they're between 30 and 60% plans. Engineering plans are made based on percentage usually. And so they're anticipating submitting information on their wetlands permitting in the next few weeks. And some changes, I don't know a ton about this, but some changes have been made recently regarding how wetlands permits are reviewed in the state. And the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers used to review some types of permits. Then those have been transferred to the Department of Ecology. And so there is a general backup in the review of plans because of this change from the Army Corps to Ecology. The public works director believes that that is the reason that some of these, this backup has occurred with this project and many other projects, is what he said. He believes that the plans should be ready by Q2 of 2024, so sometime April, May, June. And he has invited us to check back with him frequently to find out status updates. So we can maybe look into the lobbying question a little bit. But I just wanted to give that piece of information from the city. And just also add that we do have a process for letters of support from outside folks. And so one thing you could discuss is, you know, what should be the process if a member has a similar request? Because this is probably similar to a letter of support like you reviewed at the end of last year for the Philida, I'm not going to get the name exactly right, but the Philida Senior and Pace Project and also the Battleground Mobility Project that you reviewed, some of you reviewed in, I don't know, I want to say September or October of last year. Maybe this is something we should write a policy on of how these types of requests are handled. And, you know, maybe it's different than that. So that might be some discussion items for all of you to consider. And I see that Amy also has her hand up. She may know a little bit more about the wetland situation.
I, you covered it really well, Susan. I just wanted to add that the response that I received from the city engineer at Battleground was that it was going to be ready to go to bid Q2 of 2024, which also means it's a funded project. So I think they're fairly confident that it's going to be constructed is all I would add.
Okay, we've got a couple of issues then. So we need to do so.
Hold on, Franklin. Let me just say one more thing. And that is, if we just have a letter that of support for the project that they're doing, it doesn't have to be lobbying. Are we able to do that?
What happens if we do it and if we're wrong, we apologize?
Well, I was just going to say two things. And I think Franklin was telling you there is, I think there's a difference in how the county might view this. I'm just raising the question based on past experience. I think the letter of support, there's no question we can do that and should do that. The question is, when we actually get into meeting with folks in Olympia, does that in the county's view cross the line? And that's a question that I assume legal counsel or somebody would answer. But short term, I think there's no question that the letter of support would be appropriate.
I love the idea of developing a policy for future reference, too.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's really an important thing because right now, the only other person who's done that was a former member and they submitted a letter requesting a letter of support. So we probably need to set up, as you said, Ken, a process for members and whether it's different or the same as people from outside, that'll be determined. But I think also we need to research a little further on how this letter of support might be viewed as it's used at the state level. So we want to be careful that we don't do something that's not within our power. But since this is scheduled for the second quarter, I think we have a little time to get our ducks lined up before we go forward.
So Mel, just tongue-in-cheek a little bit. If you, as a private citizen, would like to join me as a private citizen on a sunny Sunday afternoon when nobody in government's working with a work party, we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to pull my concrete mixer out there and we'll just do it ourselves in the dark of night.
That would be great.
And this is a, this is a public meeting, so I wouldn't want to
I said tongue-in-cheek.
So we can do a letter of support. So can I change my request that we do a letter of support to explain to the city of Battleground that what they're doing is a good thing? Is that possible without any litigious connotations?
I defer to staff, but I think that's entirely appropriate.
I'm going to make a suggestion and then Susan, you tell me if I'm off-base or not before we hear this vote. I was going to suggest that we go ahead and take the vote now. Then we go ahead and do the research before we actually put the letter together in case there's some wording issues that we need to be cognizant of. Does that sound like a reasonable approach, Susan?
I think that sounds like a very reasonable approach. I think the only thing that you would be modifying or breaking would be in your own policy developed by the commission in the past of the procedure that you want to follow for letters of support. And it usually just requires this middle of a letter. As an alternative to that, you know, staff did a little bit of looking into the situation and found out some details. So I think it's similar in nature. So I think it would be fine to go forward with a a letter of support and begin working on that. I do think you should take a vote, though, to make sure that all members are supportive of that, that you have a majority that support that.
Okay. Can we have the motion again?
I move that we agree, this is Ken, I move that we authorize our leadership to and staff to draft a letter in support of getting this project done funded and completed.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of Ken should be putting together a letter of support based on further research, please unmute your mics and say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, given that vote and we're going to go ahead and move forward. I'd like to get a little bit more information on how we craft this letter. So we're going to do some research. Susan, let me know what steps we need to take. We'll do that offline.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Can I make one more request regarding this? May I make one request regarding this? And that is that we have a date when we want to have this prepared?
I think that would be dependent on our research. So let's hold off on that. We're going to go ahead and deal with this expeditiously, but let's hold off until we get all of our all of our issues squared away first.
We put it as an agenda item for follow-up at the next meeting?
Absolutely. Okay, any more comments or discussion on this? Does anyone else have anything good for the order before we adjourn? Okay, hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Franklin, Franklin and Cass, if you're available, could you stay on for just a moment?
Yes.
This is Ken. Thanks for the great presentation and thanks for great facilitation. Talk to you guys later.
Okay.
Did you want me to stay too, Susan, or no?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the meeting on Friday.
Oh.
Hang on one second.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Hang on, just one second.
Did you stop the recording?